I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of seven nine two thousand and nineteen, emergency session. Are there motions accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the emergency meeting on July ninth.
Second.
There's a motion of second to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion? No, favor or signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Opposed, same sign, no security. Say one peacefully. Does anyone have any citizens input tonight? Okay, must not be bad news. Old business EMS. Sarah.
So, we were looking at hiring one EMT per shift to be able to have twenty-four hours paid coverage. I was requesting that I can go ahead and start looking for part-time employees, I just needed to go ahead. That way I can actually say that yes, there will be a position to fill, not just paying, we have potentially a position.
Make a motion for Sarah to be allowed to hire part-time EMTs.
Second.
There's a motion of second to allow EMS director to hire part-time EMTs. Is there any discussion?
Uh, how many are you, how many total?
We'll have ten.
Ten total?
Yes.
Any other discussion? And they will not be able to work more than thirty hours a week.
Correct, and will be part-time.
Yeah.
It'll be under thirty hours. Erwin.
Do we need broadcast and pay, or is that just something?
Okay. It's on, it'll be on the record.
Right.
All in favor, signify. Any other discussion, I'm sorry? No, in favor of allowing Sarah to put out applications for part-time EMTs, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Derek, do you have anything? I don't know, there'd be your other old business.
I've got plenty, but it's basically gonna fall mostly under new business with several ordinances to take a look at.
Okay.
And... Unless there's any objection, I'll bring it up now, but there's basically been, uh... Some talk of basically getting the Economic Development Commission. Those positions filled, this is a three-member board. Um, and I know that that is something that needs to be done considering the situation with Manufacturing Center. That is something that I've seen a timeline that's been put together. It's something, we can consider that. It's also something I think that we can, uh... Get that filled at the meeting that we're gonna have on August the seventh. Given that the county's timetable is basically, they have an appointment to make and that would not occur until the twelfth. We're looking at a potential meeting then on the thirteenth, the day after. So, I'm simply letting you know that that's something that's been requested, maybe somebody else is gonna talk about that in the new business. I didn't see it on the agenda otherwise, but I just wanted to bring it up. Other than that, yeah, there's several ordinances to consider.
All right, let's go through ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash ten, then we'll talk about that.
Jamie will help me out when I... Don't have everything exactly correct, but basically what this is, folks, is that, um...
Sorry, I made a new agenda, forgot to give you.
Well, there you go. This ordinance is basically adopting what are called interconnection standards. This primarily deals with the solar, uh, generation for anybody that is a resident or a business in the town that wants to have any kind of a solar, uh, generation facility that would any kinda, would provide any kind of electricity to the town. If you remember, I think it was back in two thousand and sixteen or seventeen, we had a, we had an ordinance that dealt with this called net metering. Uh, we repealed that in January at the direction of MP. And we now have new standards. Uh, there's also a rider that is attached as well. It's basically a lengthy, uh, the ordinance itself is not so lengthy, but the interconnection standards and the applications, the agreements. Anybody, any customer, any citizen, any business that wants to do this, uh, needs to be familiar with these standards as well as the applications, the agreements, and the certificates that they will need to be, uh, signing and providing. The ordinance addresses those matters, but it also changes two sections of the code to again recognize that we're operational with regards to anybody that wants to put these solar facilities in place. Is that a fair summary, Jamie?
I've read all this today. I understand about, well, I get the dr- I get the drift of it, understand what it's all about. It's to protect us, protect the town, or the electric utilities, I should say. And the workers. And the workers, 'cause if one of these is back feeding, that's gonna hurt somebody.
So, if everybody's looked at it, like I said, I've read through it today, understand what I need to understand. Of course, we went through this before, a few years ago. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and pass it.
I'll make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash ten interconnection agreement. All three readings, sorry.
I have a second. There's a motion and a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash ten on all three readings. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash eleven, economic rider. An ordinance or a, that's an ordinance?
It's an ordinance, correct. If I may, we passed an ordinance back in November of two thousand and seventeen that had this economic, uh, rider with it. There've been a few updates, a few changes that were recommended by MP to be made. And so, what we are doing is repealing the substance of the ordinance of two thousand and seventeen and adopting this ordinance with the attachment, you'll see this is called rider C. And, uh, there's not many changes to what we had in place, but there are a few. Uh, and again, this was under the recommendation of MP. Sullivan, I'm sorry.
I've got the riders.
Basically, it's...
Looking at a rider.
What we've had in the past with the economic development rider, it just changes, it just cleans up the language a little bit.
I've got one clean copy of the rider. I'm sorry, that ordinance was actually passed in April of two thousand and seventeen, not November.
Suzanne's looking at that, oh. This is actually old business, what we made up for it to get it out, go on at the last meeting, got it down. And Suzanne drafted a letter and asked the council to distribute it to the board members just as a kindly reminder that, you know, you volunteered for a service, that, um, hey, we need you here. Don't just volunteer and, um, stay home, just pretend you want your name on a board. And we're having problems getting quorums. I mean, I personally don't look at this as a slam or anything, I just look at it as a kind of a reminder that says, hey, guys, you know, we volunteered, let's do what we volunteered to do. I guess you guys tabled it, you didn't wanna send it out at that time. I guess you guys thought it might be a slap in the face or something, but...
Well, George, I think Dylan, at his request, wanted to try to deal with it as one of them was, he was liaison for one of the major ones. He wanted to try to deal with it himself, and I kinda respected that for the time being. I don't know where that stands tonight, Dylan's not here. So, I, at this point, I don't know, I have no objections really to sending it out at this time, 'cause I don't know where to stand.
I don't look at it as a slap in the face to me, I mean, that depends on where you... It's just a letter that says, hey, did you forget? Because I miss meetings, I'll be the first one to admit. I remember an hour before sometimes, like, oh, and I miss them. So, it's not uncommon for everybody to miss them, but we've got so much going on right now. And we do think, and it says right here in our letter, we commend every, that Suzanne drafted this, we commend all individuals that are consistently giving up their time and effort to further our community. And we have made great progress, we have a great future on the horizon, and that's all due to the people that are on these boards, so... We made a commitment, that's a big thing, people should live up to their commitments, so I'm... I'll make the motion that we go ahead and draft this letter, we send this letter out to the board members. Is there a second? Okay. Okay, is there any other discussion on this?
Personally, I think it should go to every board, not just pick and choose as original intent.
Yeah. That's included, these are, these are what I open once in a while. There's no other discussion on this? All in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for drafting that up.
Thank you, George.
Okay, are we good on the rider? Everybody get a chance to look at that and understand how it goes with this? Suspend the rule and pass on all the agreements, ordinance twenty nineteen dash eleven, economic development rider.
I'll second.
Randy made a motion to accept ordinance two thousand and nineteen, and Sean seconded, is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We don't do this now, we can get walkout. Appointment of EDC members, Derek, you brought that up.
I did.
Jeff, um, since you're out here with, uh, March County Economic Development, you're working on all this on the time act. Do you see a problem with us waiting till our next meeting?
I don't think so, I think the ideal scenario would have been to, uh, appoint all the members as soon as possible, but because by statute, the county council has to appoint one, and we're trying to fit into, as we talked about earlier, trying to fit into the regular meeting schedule, we can't get off great a place before the next county council meeting anyhow, so I don't think it has a practical effect if, uh, if you wait until your first meeting. That's the first week of July is your first meeting, right?
Correct.
August. August, right. So, I think Derek's correct, and it will have no practical effect on that.
We were taking it, he was correct, we just wanted your opinion. How's that, you like that one? Thanks, Jim, thanks, Jim. So, do you wanna table that then, so we can...
I'll make a motion to table the appointment, EDC members until the next meeting, regular meeting?
Second.
There's a motion of second, is there any other discussion?
Keep in mind, one appointment is from the executive, George, the other appointment is from the council itself.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carried. Anyone have any other new business? Did we get resolution twenty nineteen dash ten? Did we do that tonight?
We did that.
There was an ordinance twenty nineteen ten.
Yeah, we did.
We didn't do the resolution.
No, I took this other resolution off the agenda. On the new agenda, I did not put it on there. MACOG did not get the numbers back in time, so I had to take this other resolution off. So, on the new agenda, it should not, I mean, the agenda should not be on there.
That's why I didn't say it, that's why I was confused there. Lisa, please. Thank you. Does anyone have any other old business, that's a new business? Department of Health Reports. PD, you're up first.
Well, you should have my report. The only thing I would kinda add to that is, in reference to some code enforcement, um, the business, if you will, on the, in the Dewey, or at the corner of Dewey and West Street, I talked to them, and I don't know which one I'm referring to. Um, I've given them thirty days to clean that up, and, um, it seemed like good to go and had no problem cleaning it up so far. And also, the same thing with, um, four twenty-nine Sydney Street, I don't know if any of you guys have been back there? Talked to him, and, um, yeah, he agrees it needs to be cleaned up, and actually, same thing, thirty days, and believe it's already started. You know how that goes, huh? That's about it.
Anybody got any questions for Cory? Somebody like you had a question.
What do you think about?
This, the, what we talked about with Cory, with Derek, or...
Oh, I'm waiting on to hear back from you talking.
Okay, okay. I've let Derek know, we talked about police mission.
Yeah, we'll talk about a police mission, that's where I wanna handle it first.
Hey, utilities.
Uh, you have my report. Everything's going pretty good. I don't know if you've been around Woodland Trail, Westy Court, they're paved, done. They've gotta do some striping, landscaping, uh, just finish and touch it on it, but we're gonna put that one down. Colonial State's moving along pretty good, too, I don't know if you've been out by there, they're putting concrete out, curbs, drainage is going in, so that's moving along real good, too. And then, at the last meeting, I asked about a sewer upgraded Woodland Trail. I said it's gonna be about eighty-five hundred dollars, it's gonna be a little bit more than that, so, um, I think we're looking about eleven-five. There's some valves that need replacing, or two we found out, so it's gonna look just a little bit more than what I originally thought.
It's like need fixed, and it's... This is lift station.
Lift station, yeah. I just wanna let you know that price will go up a little bit on that.
And for the record, you did and are cleaning the dry wells on the east side?
We, we did, uh, the ones on Cherry. I'll, I'll get the rest as we go, but we pulled, I think we pulled eight hundred gallons out of those, too. I mean, solids, not liquid solids, so it's gonna make a difference.
People know and can hear that you have done something about it, you didn't get them.
We checked the other one over there, and it's done, too, I think there's only, there's only about a foot, or three feet left, and they're deep, so... We gotta get the rest, we'll get them.
Okay, thanks.
You gonna do the ones down Fremont, too? What you...
Yeah, we'll, we'll do, we'll get, we'll get all of them.
That whole area?
Started, yeah.
That'll help, we'll see where we stand.
Yeah, exactly.
Anybody else got any questions for Jamie? Hey, fire department.
You should have my report. The lady's just there. I don't know if I have anything.
See it, I see it. I left my pamphlet, or my doc, everything laying on my desk when I left work tonight. Sharing off with Suzanne here.
You spent two, I see.
I, I know Suzanne is our liaison for fire, but me being on a fire, we have been running more with EMS than we ever have before, just for the simple fact of manpower for them to back up. So, you guys, it's on, I mean, that's why. Any other questions for Mark? Not EMS, we got your...
Yep, as you'll see, um, I didn't have any notes, I had a surprise, uh, meeting today with physiocontrol, which is the striker for the lightbacks. Um, I think you guys were told they're very good, in shape, they're working well. Um, I really don't have anything as far as new information.
All right, now with this all being said, we give the opportunity for her to put out her four EMTs, her part-time paid EMTs. What do we need to do first over there to, is it okay, is it one cost, we good?
There's actually two in there.
Well...
Um, yeah, technically, it is sufficient for overnight. Um, that's kinda something we need to discuss a little bit more, like for people who are in town, if they are in town, if they get hired. Um, if they are allowed to, 'cause like, I mean, I've been on other services, and when we wanted to go to dinner, my partner and I took the rig. Listen, we have a volunteer driver, am I gonna be like, hey, let's go get some food? You know, or is it acceptable for us to just stay within some limits? And then, there'd be like a written, and then a termination, if there is any kind of missed runners. So, it would be one of those kinda, it's, we're very strict, if you're getting paid, you will be on. And I also had some ideas as far as like clocking in and things, so that they have to clock in at station and clock out at station. Whether it starts as simple as the email addresses, um, on that computer, and they can shoot me an email from that computer saying, I'm on, you know, or I'm leaving, you know, those are their clock in, clock out for right now. I was gonna check with the town to see how they did it. Or, I'll go on the email, I don't care, like, I'll find something, so, and that's more discussion, so...
Personally, my thoughts on that, Sarah, is they're being paid part-time, they're an employee, they should be on station while they're on call. And, yes, to go get lunch or something, I don't suppose how they go, but I think they should stay within the city limits to figure this thing all out.
Oh, a hundred percent, like...
That's my take on it.
Well, in fact, she's, what she's really talking about is, this, they wanna go to the urban street or wherever, get a pizza or whatever. Do they drive the ambulance and take them, so that if either they're eating, if something happens, they can answer the call?
Well, no, that's not possible, unless you have the driver.
Well, that's what, yeah, see, that's your problem, you don't have the driver.
She's, as far as I'm concerned on that, she's the director, figure out what it works for.
Okay, she can figure out.
I mean, that, that's my take on it.
Well, I was also thinking, 'cause I'm gonna have to redo all these bylaws for, obviously, the pain. Um, I was also contemplating doing, contemplating doing a list of things that must be done on each shift, period. You know, we'll do supply checking, our rig check will be done every single shift, you know, things like that. So, they will have responsibilities, but at the same time, with utilities even, because I understand we don't have like the nice station that, you know, that has where people are, Culver, or, you know, all these other places. Yes, we don't have a lounge area, we just have a bed. So, that's why I was thinking, or if you wanna go out and leave, but you have to be within the city limits, or, you know, because we're, we're already waiting for a driver. So, that's why I was contemplating, and if we wanted to save, we could save a little bit on utilities as far as the, um, like the lights.
Open and close the door.
Yeah, those kind of things, so. There's pros and cons to both, we can talk about it later.
I just wanted to make sure that we're suitable.
I have a lot of ideas, but yes.
Good enough.
We can house someone.
George, do you have a motion to accept Department of Health Reports? There's a motion of second, or a motion on the floor to accept Department of Health Reports.
Second.
Um, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, Mark, you wanted to say something about...
Yeah, she didn't say anything either, but twenty-nine, the, uh...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Dave Holden's gonna put on a small, um...
CPR first aid class.
Yeah, for safety, for fire, and kinda help out with EMS.
July twenty-ninth?
Monday, July twenty-ninth at nineteen hundred. Thank you.
I will be out of town.
That was also a spur of the moment thing today.
It's seven o'clock, or...
I didn't mean to wait you this morning, I just saw it, and we needed to work on it, so I sent it to you.
I was on the five, working hour.
All right, claims. I reckon you'll see those.
Okay, um, the total debit for July seventeenth is a hundred and...
Total docket for July 17th is $161,902.36. The top five claims are as follows. Number one is payroll court, number 14, at $37,173.62. Number two is capstone insurance at $19,342. Number four is Town of Argus RSA, March 15th through May 15th, is $12,964.70. Number four is Indiana Department of Revenue, corporate tax, third quarter, $11,121.15. And Indiana Department of Revenue, second quarter, was $10,452.80. The total docket is $91,053.55, and it represents 57% of the total docket.
Your motion to accept claims?
I'd like to accept claims, number 753 through 803.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor of claims, signifying by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same sign. Before we go, Suzanne's got a little bit of a report here she would like to share.
This is from the task force. We did, we've been working on a survey. We were collecting at the festival and also at TGIF. And Carrie was kind enough to input it in the computer, she said, be easy. For me, having some of them, not easy. So she did a great job. But number one was grocery store, what people want within the community. Second, bakery. Close second, coffee shop, deli. Then ice cream shop, pharmacy, vaudeville, mad, on down the line, so childcare, dentist, dent shop. What we were trying to do was find out what people in Argus would prefer. What do they want to see for businesses? And not just to see, but that they would support. So that was the questionnaire, and I think I probably got copies of it if you want to see it. But I think most of you have. If you want to glance over this report, you're more than welcome to, I'll have a pair available for you. And the second thing we talked about at task force, and we mentioned this in our budget workshop, we're not ready for a decision yet, but we're talking about a billboard for Argus. It would be on 31, it would be 10 by 28 and illuminated. We would rent this possibly for 13 months. We would mention the community of Argus and a couple of its main features, which is the park. So we hopefully could work with Park Department, perhaps on funding this, and also the school. So that's, hopefully there'd be a partnership between the three of us on this billboard. So that is talking stages, just making you aware of the consideration.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have anyone, anything else? I ought to entertain a motion to adjourn, maybe a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion, second. All in favor of signifying by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carrying, thank you, everyone.